Call a meeting, Board. Roll call.
Roll call, this action is taken by calling each Board member's name with the Board member entry present. Mr. Murray.
Present.
Mr. Selby.
Present.
Ms. Wilson.
Present.
Mrs. Higgins.
Present.
Mr. Kazook.
Present.
All Board members present.
Adoption of the agenda.
The meeting agenda is provided for your review. I have nothing to add or strike from the agenda, so if there are no corrections or amendments, I recommend the agenda be approved as presented.
I like the motion approved adoption of the agenda. I'll say that.
Roll call.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Higgins?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Okay, item five, public comments. Anybody have a comment, Jones? Yes, sir.
Mr. Ford, I just would like to thank you for the email you put out, was it earlier this week or late last week, about the sign that went on at the door somewhere in the world with a bomb.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, close to the world. Probably most folks wouldn't have worried about it. In fact, most of them, like me, probably never knew about it till recently, reading it.
Yep.
But for those who did and maybe were worried about sending their children to school, I think it was a great, you know, a great idea and job, well.
Well, I appreciate that, and I want to note Sheriff Paulson and Mr. Greider and other law enforcement, because Jackie was on it earlier than I was, but then I was letting our law enforcement goes, and the sheriff said right there, says, "I'm awake," you know, and in this taking time, you have to take things seriously, but we could quickly identify that that was not within, you know, Russell County schools, so, but I, thank you, Mr. Anderson. Appreciate that.
Late seventies and early eighties in the Navy, for all ships in port, almost at least once a week, one of them would get a bomb, and they would send everybody off the ship, and took those searching for it. Hopefully, we don't get into something like that.
Yes, sir. That is a concern.
Yes.
I do also, with Mr. Kazook, during public comments time, just to draw everyone's attention to our check here. If you can't see in the audience, this is a check that I gladly hold up higher. It's from Kevin Williams concert that First Baptist Church hosted for us. Eighty-one thousand, four hundred fifty-two dollars and seventy-two cents, and additional dollars have came in since then, probably at least over a thousand. Mr. Smith had shared with me. Of course, that is divided up to each of our schools, to the Family Resource and Service Centers. The teachers in the room certainly know what that goes to and how we help students with that. Kevin extends his appreciation to everyone, and he's just, you know, personally, Kevin is so motivating for me and just such an encourager. I can be driving down the road on a random day, and he'll say, "Hey, just thinking about Mr. Ford, have a blessed day." And I think we have all came to know Kevin, and that's just a genuine Kevin Williams. So, we just appreciate what all he does, and Mr. Smith here, and Mr. Selby, and others that go to Russell Springs First Baptist Church, thank you all, and Mr. Anderson, and I'm sure there's probably others in the room, because I know that's quite an undertaking. We were talking about that after the concert, that you all have there for your church. So, we appreciate everything that everybody does on behalf of our students, because that's what it's about. It's the community coming together, but it's bigger than this community. You know, the gentleman from Indiana that donated 250 cardhart jackets because he heard what Kevin Williams was doing. It's just ripple effects, but at the end of the day, it just warms your heart that you know that people care about kids and the families, and just the good stewards, that Mrs. Dameron with the Family Resource and Youth Service Centers, they're just, they just do a good job for us, and I just appreciate everybody with that. I'll hush. It's pretty special, and like Kevin says, it's nowhere else in Kentucky that that happens. You know, it's pretty special.
Okay. Item number six is recognition.
Mr. Smith was going to show that.
Oh, you want to show that now?
Mr. Smith has a drone of the athletic facility, some drone footage of during the athletic facility. He's going to do that during public comment time. I think I want to get out of the way. Come over here.
I usually show you pictures from each, we do a report, but actually Mason from Piles Escavating had his drone out there today. It took some drone footage, so it actually shows you the entire side of what work has been completed to date, and also you can kind of see where things are going to be that I'll point out as it goes through. This was from, I think, Thursday of last week.
That's right.
So, it's pretty close to, it's been a little bit more done. What you see there now, that's pretty much the subgrade of what would be the new football field, track area. It's pretty close. You can see all the cut that's come off the old practice field, how far we've been digging down. What he's flying to now, as you'll see, come into view here in just a minute, this is actual, pretty close to subgrade for the new tennis courts. See the existing tennis courts there, but that's where the new tennis courts will be located. Still, still fielding around the edges, they're working their way in as we can get dirt to dry. We've had a little bit of problem with dirt being too high in moisture content, but.
They're having to take some of the dirt, spray it down.
Till it.
Disget.
Move it back, disget again, move it, disget again, so, but it's working. Of course, all of this area gets cut down eventually. We're just working our way up, up from the lower. As you can see, this lower area is where we started, and how much field's been brought in here. This will eventually be up to, close to grade up here by the, what will be the new football field. This area right in here is what you see will eventually be where the visitor bleachers sit on the visitor's side of the football field. This is this lower area that we're filling as we come up, and underneath all this is where, you all approved that change over a month or so ago, of all of this under drainage that keeps all of this sediment in this pond.
And even today, there's water still running through that pipe.
Still flowing out of that pipe since we put it in. It's not stopped. And this, of course, the backside of the property, and it's kind of where we've started to fill, working our way back. Of course, this is still going to be filled quite a bit, but we have to put it in about eight, 10-inch lifts of dirt to get it past. You can see up here where we're coming to is how much this has been cut down since we started.
I sent some pictures to faculty and staff just to show students if they were talking about the rock size or the different soil levels, because I'm not obvious.
And we've hit about every kind of dirt you can hit in this area. Sandstone, to red clay, to mud, to everything else. But you'll get kind of an overview of the side. Again, this is, you can kind of start to see the outline of the track coming in. It's a pretty big area once you kind of see it from above.
We need to, later on in the project, talk about that fence row, because I just don't think any of us want a nice facility, and then the fence row looks so shabby.
Of course, all of this is still going to be cut down. They're working their way up. You can see how they're digging coming up through here, and there's still great work to do in this area. And all of this is still going to be filled. They're just working their way as it can.
Some nights of dirt, a couple of weeks.
Well, pause it right here, because I want to show you, all of this area behind the baseball field, you can see the difference in elevation down here where the bus garage is. All of this area gets cut down approximately 10 feet. So, there's still a lot of great work that's got to be done behind the baseball field, but we're working in this area, working our way that way, so that we can let them get baseball season up with, because the retaining walls go around behind what would be visitor bleachers, the locker room and all that, but it'd be more like a, you go to a ballpark, you walk up to it, that's what it'll look like when we're finished with the ramps going up to the baseball field. It'd be more like a stadium field when you go into it, but all of that area still, it's approximately 10 feet from asphalt down, it's got to be cut. Of course, all that material's got to be used. Of course, this will turn into parking, concession stand will sit right in here, and then the future pad for what would be a football locker room, weight room later on will be put in.
None of this dirt is hauled off site. We need every load that's.
Every teaspoon full of it, we're giving.
Yes, every teaspoon, that's right. Can you go back the other way for just a minute?
Yeah. How far?
Just right before the other stop, right there. No, go back. It shows the end of the bus garage. Just if anybody's interested, that bus that's in the tree line, and there's a white box van, that's, we'll take it, sealed bids on it up there. Right there. There's a tree, you're on to the front, there's a, call us if you're interested in a sealed bid. Mr. Anderson, you need some storage?
I told him it could turn into the playground, like you said.
Russell Springs has a playground. We would love to have some sealed bids for the board to open up and make.
Did you have to move it?
Yes, as is where it is. You moved it, that's right.
But that just gives you an overview of kind of where we're at right now, the work that's been completed. Any questions?
It's amazing the amount of work that's happened out there. It's some dry weather.
Next item is recognition.
So, we have our three distinguished educators that are going to be recipients of Campbellsville University's Excellence in Teaching Awards. I've got a little statement to read that Campbellsville sends out that notes the awards, but Mr. Charlie Anderson, representing Russell County High School, Ms. Allison Coffey representing the elementary school, and Ms. Rhonda Kimbler, all their elementary schools, and Ms. Rhonda Kimbler recognizing the middle school. I told her a few weeks ago, said, "You're going to get to come to one board meeting, instead of, you'll have to give out a recognition, but you get one too this time." So, Campbellsville University began the Excellence in Teaching Award program in 1987 with assistance from Mr. Earl Aaron and the Ward Kunduf and Aaron Memorial Fund. The purpose of this program is to recognize the quality teaching and learning taking place in the school systems throughout Kentucky. This year's event, it's called Excellence in Teaching 2023, is Saturday, May 13th, at 11 o'clock, and it's held there on the campus at Campbellsville University. Through the awards program, Campbellsville University presents certificates to teachers in each grade level, preschool, elementary, middle grades, and high school as selected by their school districts. Over 3,000 teachers have been honored since this program's inception. The purpose of this award is to recognize quality teaching in Kentucky schools and to strengthen the field of education. It provides statewide recognition of three outstanding individuals for their leadership and dedication to the teaching profession. Implicit in the award is the expectation that the recipient's examples may inspire all teachers to excel. In addition to recognition and award ceremony, recipients will receive a personalized certificate, a press release, and a photo will be sent to the newspaper in the recipient's community if desired, and I've already told them, we're sending it to all the newspapers and radio, and even, some of them left off a couple of media outlets, and I got with them, said, "That's okay?" So, and beyond that, and the excellence in teaching, I think these three folks with us tonight just recognizing, caring about kids, and doing what's right by kids, and we appreciate that out of each one of you. I don't know who's on first, so they're not in any order, but Ms. Rhonda Kimbler. So, we have, you'll be getting your certificate from Campbellsville University, but we also want to present you with a certificate of recognition.
Appreciate it.
Ms. Rhonda. Ms. Allison Coffey? Appreciate you, Ms. Allison. Oh, he didn't have to, Mr. Charlie Anderson? Get up there with him, Zach. Appreciate you all. Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Class of 88.
Class of 88. How many of you?
All three of us.
Are you serious? The class of 88? All three of them.
They're two days older.
Well, that's really unique, you all. I'm sure that's never happened before.
I know. They look a lot older than I've been.
Well, seven half.
That is, that is, that is really neat.
That's really.
Yeah, they've been enough on you.
So, on May the 13th, they'll have a reception. It's always, I was telling them, it's always a great day, and then they feed us a really good meal, and it's just, it's just a good day. It's all right, good teachers. Ms. Rhonda, go ahead.
Next item is Russell County Education Association. Teacher of the Month recipient, Malia Coffey Walters, Jamestown Elementary.
Talking about all this age stuff has me thinking, what year did you graduate?
Was your class of 82?
Five years ago.
Five years ago. Hey, Mr. Anderson, it does have an A in.
But her daddy, her daddy graduated class of 88, but it wasn't here.
Oh, okay.
So, that sort of puts that in perspective.
Yeah, I knew, I knew what I could remember when she was born, that I was really getting old, so, and I was told all those things. Anyway, Ms. Malia, as soon as I sent this out, let her know, she sent back, yay, I'm so excited. So, it is nice to be able to award these young people in teaching this award as well. She teaches at Jamestown Elementary School. She's in first grade. That was where I have spent most of my career at, is in first grade. So, God love your soul. It's a wonderful class. It's a wonderful grade. They just take a lot of energy, but they, you will love those kids forever, and when they grow up and they come back and look at you, you look in their eyes, and they, okay, I know those eyes. Face has grown, and they're here, and they've got a beard and whatever, so, anyway, but you still recognize the eyes. Subjects, of course, reading, math, science, social studies, pretty much all, I love it, yeah, first grade. Other subjects taught, RTI teacher at Jamestown, colleges, University of the Cumbellins, elementary education with a minor in special ed, and what do you like best about teaching? I love this. She's written me a paragraph of all the things she likes about teaching. When I think about what I like best about teaching, the first thing that comes to mind is the relationships that I have with my students. The connections that I have made with my students this year is the sole reason I believe they are successful. Something about seeing a smiling face from a seven-year-old first grader and hearing from a parent that you're all they talk about at home makes the hard days work every minute, and that is so true.
That's good food for the soul, isn't it?
That is so very true. The hugs that I give, the compliments, and the way they make me feel like an absolute superstar drives me to work so hard so they can achieve their wildest dream. I tell my students all the time, you're not just in my classroom to learn math, reading, science, or social studies, but you're in my classroom to learn how to be the very best person that you can be, so that you can grow up. You will make a difference in the world. So, I believe, long story short, that the best thing I can, that I like about teaching is the impact that I get to make every single day and the lives that I have a chance to change. Her hobbies are attending First Baptist Church in Russell Springs. She loves to read, being with her family and friends. I enjoy this time spent with three dogs, Sadie, Lake, and Ruby. I've got a lake as well. I hope yours is not as old as mine is, but probably so. I love being on the lake with my family. And her favorite quote, "The best thing about being a teacher is that it matters. The hardest part about being a teacher is that it matters every single day." And then I'm going to turn this over. I'm going to present you with your check and let her share with us anything else that she'd like to tell us tonight, okay? I just want to thank you all for allowing me to be a part of this school system and always having such an amazing support system, and I wouldn't want to be anywhere else. I was wanting to get back to this community, so that was my number one goal when I went into college and became a teacher. So, thank you all so much.
Next item. Sheriff Paulson, School Resource Officers.
I just tell you, Sheriff, you've got a hard act to follow.
I didn't graduate '83. I appreciate each and every here tonight, giving me a speech for a minute. Of course, I know we've worked tirelessly as far as, you know, kind of teach school resource officers in the schools, and you all have worked along with, you know, the physical corps, and Russell Springs, and Jamestown doing the same thing. Of course, ultimately, when I took office in 2018, we started applying for grants in 2019. We was blessed, to grace of God, you know, to at least to get our school resource officer grant, the first one that I can ever remember for Russell County as far as me being sheriff. But anyway, I know we got it, and we was lucky to get it, and at the time when we applied for it, I guess I look back, I wish I'd applied for one or two more, but I didn't at the time. I mean, I said, we wouldn't expect to get it. But anyway, that being said, of course, as of June the 30th, our grant comes in, and of course, the sheriff's department itself cannot sustain it. You know, I advised Jamestown also as well, after this year, beginning in January of 2024, we won't be able to help with the city of Jamestown's SRO. And tonight, you know, I've come here and, like I said, trying to get all parties together, physical corps, Russell Springs, and you all, and even Jamestown, trying to figure out a way to go ahead where we can get these school resource officers sustained in school system. I know right now, the cost to keep either of them at either of the schools is $46,800 each, which is $3,600 to be able to do that. And like I said, the county attorney's offered his assistance in bringing everybody together, trying to figure out.
Can I, oh, interrupt you, but I'd ask Susan, that was, I got a different amount that Misty had. Can we talk about that? I had $32,740 per deputy. Was exactly, was yours based on the 170 school days with kids?
This is probably not.
Okay, that might be the difference.
This is probably for the whole year, I'd say.
Yeah, she has the daily rate and everything listed here, but that's what I'd share with the board member, Sheriff.
I would say that more than likely is probably what it is, because.
This is just based on the 170 days.
Yes, because I know the guys, I know Mr. Bradshaw and Mr. Meyer always helps us in the summer, so that's probably that extra that come in.
And in Jamestown, correct me if I'm wrong, it's either $7,000 or $9,000 that each entity is paying.
I think it's $7,000.
I thought it was $7,000. Between the four.
Yes. But anyway, if there's some way we can make, maybe everybody can come together, try to figure out something, you know, if they're willing to do it, because, you know, y'all want to protect their children. I want to protect their children. I can't wait until they're funded, or I kind of feel like I'm an advocate trying to get everybody together right now to do it, and I just want to thank you all.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
But I thank you all.
And I think I can speak for the board that we're committed to that as well. We have to have a budget here in May, and then we'll have a working budget in September, but these are certainly items to considerate, for consideration for that fiscal year 24 budget, because like you said, June 30th is when that grant ends for that fiscal year. You and I can get together and see, compare those two numbers and see what that came up with as well, too, because that's a, that's a little bit of difference than what Susan had shared with me, that Misty had, I think, is that her name, Sheriff, in the office? Yeah, that he calculated, sent to Susan for me. We could, we could talk about that. So, we didn't have.
Well, that's very welcome, you know, like during the summer.
Additional days or something.
I understand it'd be only 100 suit legs if they're on the board.
Right.
For us to pick it up, because no way you'd have to clear up your trainings.
Sure.
But I appreciate you all, let you all know.
Appreciate you. When I'm in superintendent meetings and we're talking about school resource officers and school safety, people just shake their head with the cooperation we have here in Russell County between the fiscal corps, city of Jamestown, city of Russell Springs, and the sheriff's office. That is not, I think Mr. Greider could attest to that, the compliance officer, Toby Young, can attest to that, that is not everywhere. It's a, it's a lot of butting heads and finger pointing and things like that. So, we appreciate the cooperation from, from every entity, and at the end of the day, it's a, it's a large population of Russell County residents in confined spaces that we're all working towards to, together to protect. There's rarely a meeting that we're in, well, I was in a principal meeting here today, that Mr. Greider doesn't mention things about school safety. So, while we're talking about that, got some tentative approval, well, not really tentative, it's more or less do it, and maybe we'll schedule a special call board meeting to upgrade our camera system within the district, because that's very lacking and permission using the American Rescue stimulus money instead of coming out of general fund. I've reached out to Jay Ritter, which is an associate commissioner, and Ms. Carnes knows him well, and I've got to know him well, and he's always looking for ways to help districts, as is Ms. Carnes, of how to word things, how to look at things, and.
If it can be done, he'll help you.
If it can be done, he'll find a way. But this will be a really, really good, Mr. Bell and Mr. Greider worked with the company that's on the state price contract to get some prices, and we were, just got that approval too late to bring it to you all today, because we have to put it in what's called GMAP for the state to formally approve it, to bring back to you all. But maybe we'll have a special call board meeting, because I really don't want to wait till May to get that off the ground, but that will be a big kick in regards to school safety here in Russell County schools. We've got cameras here, middle school and high school, but they're lacking in other places, and even here, they're not always the covers that we'd like them to be inside of now. So, a lot of other benefits to that, to where secretary can sit at the desk and say, "Well, there's somebody at door number seven. What's going on there?" Yeah, yeah. We're really excited about that.
They're just, they're our systems now. Even though we have someone, they're just doing all they can do. That's nothing strategic. It's just enough to get some detailed stuff, but, boy, Mr. Bell and I, we went up and went through all the schools, kept that company here all day, all day, one day, even after the afternoon, and was, he was, he was thinking about, we were looking at hot spots, good spots, target spots, catching traffic, being able, right now, I couldn't even tell you, get a good tag number, someone pulled up, and done a threat or done a harm, where I could track that vehicle, you know, get it out to the road deputy supply. But it's just doing all it can do. So, we'll talk about it, and hopefully you'll see the, see the need for that.
We're really excited about that.
But thank you all very much.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Can I break the agenda rules and ask you a question? I think, Sheriff, you said it. I didn't quite register it quick enough. What comes when you graduate in '63?
When does the funding run out? What would be the immediate impact if we can?
Well, if we don't get an extension, I know Susan stopped the extension for COVID year, or COVID year in three months. If we don't get the extension, it'll be June 30th. If we got the extension, then it'll be October or something. And if we didn't figure out something to do, we'll go back to basically what I was doing when I first took over, right? Check the schools in one, and three, obviously, you know, stretching here, and just try to, you know, go in and check, do good.
It pays for two full-time SROs, and then, does the cost grant, or your individual budget pay for Mr., for Jamestown?
It's individual budget.
Okay, and then. His office is, pulls the other part for a third resource officer, that, us and the city and the fiscal corps kicks in on, too. But it's immediate, two full-time SROs with that cost grant.
Next item on the agenda is consent agenda.
We have the previous meeting minutes, payment of bills, school activity fund reports. Noticed that there has been an issue with Russell Springs, and so they're not included with the school activity fund report. We'll include them in the, in the next one for two months. Field trips and treasures monthly report. Treasures report for the month of March 2023, balance on hand at beginning of the month was $10,19,115.80. Total receipts for the month were $3,658,670.16. Total of the receipts beginning balance together, $13,677,785.96. Disbursements for the month were $4,984,236.53. That brought our balance at the close of the month to $8,693,549.43. In our fund balances, for the general fund, fund one, $8,504,851.50. In special projects, fund two, negative $1,073,338.29. District activity, fund 21, $13,335.
dollars and eleven cents. Capital outlay, Fund Three Ten, one hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars even. FSPK Building Fund, Fund Three Twenty, one million, ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and one dollars and eighty-three cents. Construction Fund Three Sixty, negative nine hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and forty-six cents. Debt service Fund Four Hundred, zero dollars. Food service Fund Fifty-One, nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars and four cents. Fiduciary Fund, Fund Seven Thousand, three thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy cents. Total cash and bank for all the funds, eight million, six hundred and ninety-three thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty-three cents. I will note, we received a large federal cash request in Fund Two in the month of March, but we turned right around and paid about one point two million dollars for the HVAC stuff we did at Russell Springs. So, while we got a lot of money in, we got, we sent it right back out again, so it's one of those, you got to spend it and ask for it. So, until we kind of get the rest of that stimulus money spun up and we've got some large ticket things we're doing, you know, we've approved to do some roofs and HVAC and hopefully the security cameras and stuff, we're going to see that run a pretty high negative there, because we've got to spend it and then ask for it, and it generally takes the next month to get it back, so.
Thank you, Ms. Sheriff. There are no changes or amendments, I recommend approval of consent agenda items.
Motion.
I want to look at the consent agenda items.
I'll say it. Roll call.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Gazu?
Yes.
Okay, item nine, 2023-2024 district staffing and site-based decision-making allocation policy.
Of course, you all have previously approved the tentative allocations for the schools, and this, they have to have their final by reg by the May 1st, and this is for the 23-24 school year. One thing that this does add that it didn't have before is it will provide an in-school suspension teacher for both the middle school and the high school, and because we feel more comfortable about the budget, initially, we were going to give the bare minimum of a hundred dollars per pupil for each, for each student. This bumps that backup on their supply money for a hundred and forty-seven dollars per student, and that's calculated on the average daily attendance for each of that, so that's the, from going from a hundred to a hundred and forty-seven. And principals use that money for a litany of things. One thing that comes to the top of mind is pay for the copper bill and paper, that's probably the biggest ticket item, and then just a lot of instructional things and things throughout the school, but that's allocation supply money that the board allocates from the seat formula to each individual school. So, we just want to note those two changes, that the middle school and high school would have in-school suspension teachers. Got a formal request from Mr. Ackerman, just noting that having that, a request of an in-school suspension teacher would help keep more kids at school versus suspending kids and then their, not completing their assignments and things like that, if he had a dedicated person to, to handle that within the, within the campus. I recommend approval of the final staffing formula, SBDM allocations, and the staffing and allocation policy for the 23-24 school year, and that the formula becomes part of the minutes.
The motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say it.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Gazu?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is BG One for Salem Elementary Schools HVAC project.
Okay, you all have previously approved the proposal, and the amount has not changed, this just formalizes the BG One that's submitted to the Kentucky Department of Education, so that BG One is attached, you all approved that at February 2023 meeting. I'll note that the project at Russell Springs was exactly what the check was written, was exactly for the amount that they had budgeted for, for that project. So, the purchase order proposal also attached along with documentation, again, the thermal service is on a state price contract via KPC, and so it's just a formal approved BG One that goes to the Kentucky Department of Education. Very similar project to what we just almost got done with at, at Russell Springs Elementary School. We recently had a controls meeting with them to where, you know, if it's Christmas time and the thermostats have all been turned down pretty low, Mr. Reynolds or maintenance staff or myself or Mr. Bell, we could go in there like the day before, kind of remotely, and get things kind of cranked back up so we could control the temperature, so it's just not running crazy when it's unoccupied, and keep the electricity bills lower, all those different things like that, so a lot of good controls and energy efficiency with these programs, too. But again, you all approved the proposal, this is just the actual BG One that goes with it.
Is there a motion?
I like a motion.
Second. Roll.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Gazu?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is accept or reject proposal for asphalt sealing and crack sealing and striping.
So, Russell County schools advertised for proposals and bids for asphalt sealing, crack sealing, and striping for Russell Springs Elementary School, Salem Elementary School, Jamesville Elementary School, and the central office. We received one bid from Selby Asphalt Maintenance for one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, thirty dollars and seventy-seven cents. They, they included absolutely everything of all the required documents. The breakdown was the seal coating of a hundred and four thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars and nine cents, crack sealing fifteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars and eight cents, and the striping eighteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty cents. If you remember, when we attempted this in the fall, we didn't get any bids, and we did have some people that had inquired about it, but when you do a school project, you're required to, you know, have some additional insurance, you're required to have some other paperwork. I think some companies may not have had all the requirements, per se, that the bid packet proposed, but Selby did. You can drive by our parking lots, they're in bad need of coating, and we've got some significant cracks that need filled before they get worked. I do recommend accepting the bid proposal from Selby Asphalt Maintenance for asphalt sealing, crack sealing, and striping for those four locations, Russell Springs Elementary School, Salem Elementary School, Jamesville Elementary School, and the central office. And then, as you all remember from that bid proposal, if you all accept this, that we would, we asked the contractor to just schedule with us during the summertime. You might get with principals and say, okay, Mrs. Blankenship, you know, we can, Selby's can do Jamestown during this week, you know, keep people off it, don't let people come in, drive on the sealer and stuff like that during that time, but so.
Anyone can do it still, but they're not there.
Oh, yeah, but it, it changes not only that, but Mr. Grader, I was talking, just the aesthetics, it certainly helps the surface, but just the aesthetics of the parking lot, it looks a whole lot better, too.
I'm a person.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Roll.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Gazu?
Yes.
I'll notify them and kind of get things rolling if we need to do it.
Needs to be done.
It does need to be done, yes, sir.
Item twelve, contracts, memorandums, agreements.
Okay, we have five, either contracts or memorandums or agreements. Midway University, it's their memorandum agreement for student teaching. Eastern Kentucky University, their MOA for student teaching. Our Reed, Varell Incorporated, contract that you all see yearly almost for the teacher for students that are visually impaired. Commonwealth of Kentucky, we have received a little over thirty thousand dollars to purchase another bus. It's very similar to when we got the Volkswagen settlement. I remember Mr. Murray talking about, because we had to put a hole through the engine, remember that, hole through the hole? This is very similar to that, we have to take off, we have to take a bus, an older bus, and it cannot, never be used on the, put back out again, to purchase a bus that meets these requirements, but we get thirty thousand dollars towards a new bus, so we just want to, we didn't want to turn that away.
Well, no, we've got one that was surplus, that'd be ideal.
Yeah, unfortunately, it has to, it has to be one that's purely on the road. Good truck.
Good truck, anyway.
And that one doesn't even have an incident.
Yeah, I could have put one in it.
No, you could.
We could, we could get one in it.
You all could put one in it, but we just didn't want to.
Put it in, certainly.
We're not ready to purchase the bus, we'll still have to bring that back to you all, because it has, it has to be one that meets their clean air formula, but for thirty thousand dollars, I know we've already authorized to purchase five buses with the ARP fact, but I didn't think we wanted to leave thirty thousand dollars on the table.
No.
So, I appreciate Mr. Foley and Mr. Wolford working on this grant. You know, sometime last year, to tell you the truth, I kind of forgot about it until we got more, more donation. So, in my opinion, thirty thousand is thirty thousand.
That's right.
And then the next one is our Montgomery and Company for PLLC for our fiscal year 23 auditor's contract. I recommend approval of the contracts or memorandums or agreements that's been approved by the board attorney.
I'll make that just.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Gazu?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is short school day and/or week.
Local boards of education must approve requests for students to have a short school day or week. This decision is determined by the needs of the students. The documentation, including the board's recommendation, is then submitted to the Kentucky Department of Education. As I noted before, there's some students that are in special education, and when their ARC committee, their IEP team meeting, it's retroactive, back to that date after you all approve it, and then the paperwork is sent to the, to the board of education. So, I recommend a shortened school day and/or week for the following students, ID S-2307, ID S-2308, and S-2309, and that, that means for school year 23, we've had now, we're up to nine students that have had to have a short school day or week, and then we, Mrs. Dick takes that information and sends that to the Kentucky Department of Education.
Need a motion, please.
I'll make a motion until it's got it. Roll.
I'll say it.
Second.
Roll.
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Gazu?
Yes.
Next item, out-of-state and/or overnight trips.
The following groups have received approval from the superintendent for the following out-of-state trip, June 20th to 24th, the Hosta Club. We have a student, Erica Wilpersen, congratulations to her, part of Miss Roy's program, Miss Pike's program there at the New ATC, but she's placed, and now she goes to the International Leadership Conference in Dallas, Texas, for the Hosta Club, so we're just outstanding, proud of her. And then, if you all recall, at the last board meeting, you all noted to help fund Educators Rising, and this is that official request for them, June 28th to July the 2nd of this year, they'll have that competition in Orlando, Florida. So, I recommend approval of out-of-state and overnight trips.
I went to one doctor, like, it was somewhere that, one day, actually, that doctor, her girl.
Oh, was that right?
Yeah.
Nice, wizard.
Yes, major wizard name.
Yeah.
We need a motion, please.
I'll make that motion for the out-of-state overnight trips.
Second.
Say it.
Roll.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Gazu?
Yes.
Use of school bus by Major League Fishing, KHSA, waveboard policy zero six point five, use of bus by outside groups.
This is very similar to what the tourist commission asked a few weeks ago, it says this one is actually more school-related. The Major League Fishing is the entity that coordinates the regional tournaments for the bass fishing for the Kentucky High School Athletics Association, and I've attached that request for Major League Fishing to use one of our buses for transporting the anglers from the Hatchery to Howcom's, Howcom's Ram on April the 29th, 2023. The cost would be covered by the Major League Fishing, fuel, driver, et cetera, and they would be using one of our school bus drivers, so it's, it's our bus and our driver, and then they would reimburse us for that. But again, our current board policy prohibits the use of school buses by outside agencies, but the board can elect to waive that policy, then their request, this is a backup, this is a backup plan, just like the tourist commission, because if the corps don't start bringing in equipment prior to this, they will not need a bus, but they can't wait to know that, so they need an option if this, if this comes into play. If you all will approve it, then I'll, I'll get with Mr. Wolford to line up a driver. So, I recommend approval of the Major League Fishing request to use one of our buses and to waive board policy zero six point five.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'll say it.
Roll.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Gazu?
Yes.
That's a really big thing for our area to host that tournament. It's big.
But they really show good.
Yeah, they really do.
Next item on the agenda, executive session, student discipline and employee discipline, KRS 61.8101F.
So, KRS 61.8101F, subsection 1F permits boards, boards of education to go into an executive session for a hearing which may lead to a discipline or expulsion of a student, and then also for employee of a discipline. I will also note that I'd like to Mrs. Dameron to join us for the student part, and she'll be excused when we talk about the employee. So, I recommend we go into executive session with Mrs. Dameron as a guest pursuant to KRS 61.810, subsection 1F, our hearing which may lead to discipline or expulsion of a student and employee discipline.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say it.
Roll.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Gazu?
Yes.
Next item, personnel reports.
Tyler Grader resigned Russell County Middle School, LBD exceptional education teacher, he's going to stay with us till the end of the 22-23 school year.
Yeah.
He's, we wish him well. Mr. John Gossar resigned as a bus driver effective February 16th, 2023. Mr. Dana Lance Coote resigned Russell County Middle School math teacher effective April 12th, 2023, and Mr. David Delk resigned as a bus driver effective today, April 17th, 2023. That's all I have, except for public comment.
Do you have anything to comment?
I have something.
Okay.
If you could, I forgot to turn my receiver on, so I missed the part about the employee and the student discipline part, could you all tell me again, just repeat what you said after we come back from the executive session, if you would.
Yes.
To go.
Do you want us to do the motion for coming back?
No, 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 this is all still being recorded.
Okay, you want me to go back through that and say that I?
Just know what happened?
Just know what happened.
I moved to adopt stipulations that discuss student ID number EX-2301 to be expelled